Calling meetings to order at 7:04 on July 7th, 2016. I'd like to thank Area 58 for filming tonight. Are there any visitors that would like to be scheduled or acknowledged? Seeing none?
No.
Crickets, yeah. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from June?
Motion for approval, the minutes from June 6, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? Post extinctions? Okay. Warrants are circulating, they're almost finished. School Committee Correspondence and Reports. The only correspondence we have is the MSBA email, but we're gonna discuss that later, so we'll just move on with that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The MSBA email from Charlie about the funding for the roof. But we're gonna get into that later on, so we're good. Unfinished business. I know the energy efficiency projects, I think, are halted for the summer. Is that correct, Kane? Or do you have an update on that?
Well, as of...
Well, I don't know if halted is the right word.
...last meeting, but they were... They did do the lighting in the cafeteria. And it looks great. And they also finished the kindergarten light.
Okay.
As of right now, that's... One of the things is just the container out back in the apartment.
And is that done, stays, and go away then?
No, Matt's working on it, too, to get that for... Just as long as...
Well, I know it's getting locked in back, the other night, on my way to my car, something fireworks, and I'm like, "Oh, we're done."
Maybe, yes, so it's...
I'm gonna write $500 on each one of these.
Get that taken care of.
So, the whole project, at this point, is completely done. All of the lighting that we're going to do is at this phase?
Yes. Yes. And the last two were the cap that they added on at the last minute, and then they wanted to finish up kindergarten light, so they did finish those pieces.
Excellent.
Has everybody been adjusting to the new level of lighting every month?
It seems like it. The only lift that we did have was in the back of the building here, where because of the dorm room that we had, they were only able to put in five light fixtures, so they did figure out a way to put in six.
Oh, that comes out to wear that dorm room.
So, no one's getting headaches, and nobody can see?
Yeah. Everyone, I think, was pretty happy with it, just about how they even came back and they worked with teachers that were in the back wing here, just to kinda add that additional fixtures.
Nice.
And then in the other parts of the building, I think people were pretty happy with what they had. And the hallway as well. Kindergarten's great, and cat is great, too, so we had it.
Nice. Awesome. The only other thing I wanted to mention under unfinished business was the water situation. So, I have spoken with the water superintendent. He could not be here tonight, but we are meeting Monday morning, first thing. So, if anybody between now and Monday has any questions specifically you would like me to ask him, feel free to email me. And I just pretty much was gonna ask him, you know, how often they're testing, what they found when they tested, when they published the article in the Globe, and, you know, what we're gonna do about those issues moving forward. But if anybody has any specific things they would like me to ask him, feel free to shoot me an email, and I will be sure to get an answer from him on Monday morning.
So, you didn't talk to him at all?
I did.
Okay.
I did. So, it was good. I think he kinda gave some information in terms of how often they do the testing, and the reports that they did have, and I think he, you know, helped share some additional information, but they were tested right after, because one was actually a staff bath, and that was down here, that came up a little bit on the elevated side, but it was tested like a week later, so, and it turned up.
So, was his view that it was blown out of proportion, the Globe article?
I mean, I don't wanna speak for him, I think he'll be able to share that, but I think he said, in my conversation with him, that we've never had an issue here. He said, "But, we do the testing every three years." He said, "We can now be, with what came up, we can maybe be a little bit more proactive in terms of flushing out the system and testing it, because during the summer months, it's..."
It's not that in a lot of places.
Right.
Do you have thoughts?
When they did those tests, it was first thing in town, so the water's been sitting in the pipes for a while.
Maybe crank it up the day before school opens.
Yeah.
Well, he had mentioned something like, but he said, there really, he didn't feel that there was a need to flush out the system, but maybe just kind of ongoing usage of it every once in a while throughout the summer months, but then maybe come up with a plan for testing water in the building, because he's the one that does the testing stuff. And then the other piece that we said that was in the kindergarten, he had indicated that was actually at Holmes, so it wasn't in kindergarten.
It was what?
It was at the Holmes.
Oh, in the library?
Yes.
Oh.
Which is still concerning, but doesn't bother nor after.
Buries out of our purview. Right, yeah, exactly.
So, is...
You don't share pipes with them?
I'm sure we do.
We share.
It's probably a frequency issue, though.
Who we hear?
What if water's going on, and they're in there?
Very hard to say what...
Do they have their own meter?
I'm sorry?
Do they have their own water meter?
Why don't you email me that question, and I will ask him?
Because if they do, then we're not sharing water.
I couldn't give you a good answer.
We'll have to walk the perimeter later.
Yeah, I'd like to have better...
Yeah, I'll ask, like I said, email me some questions, I'll try to get as many details as I can, and maybe him and I can talk about a plan moving forward to be more proactive, since it is an issue.
It's hard for anybody to know what's going on.
Yeah, and I'll have something either prepared or ask him to come at our August meeting, and if that doesn't happen, then I'll make sure that we...
Well, September.
I'm just trying to be, you know, keep all my ducks in a row here.
You can make the motion.
I'm gonna make that.
But, yeah, so either way, I'll have, I mean, if you... Is it appropriate for me to type up a little summary of my meeting with him and send it to everybody?
That'd be great.
Okay. So, I can do that, so everybody has an answer now, and then we can discuss it publicly at our September meeting. And if there are kind of, and I would be happy to invite him to come and to speak with us, too, just to clarify any other questions we have that aren't answered. Because we did tonight, but he couldn't make it, so, I mean, he wants to come in the summertime at night. We don't even wanna be here.
The ceiling is so comfortable.
Wicked, wicked comfortable.
It's fine.
So, that's it.
So, we'll email you with our...
Yeah, so I'm meeting him like 8:00 a.m. on Monday morning, because it's, you know...
So, by Monday?
Yes. By Sunday night would be better, so I can get it together for Monday morning, because I'm out of town, usually working during the week, so that's the only time that I could meet with him.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. New business? I don't have any.
Future? Oh, new business, sorry.
Future agenda items, besides the water situation? If, you know, obviously, we have plenty of time, if anybody wants to throw anything out there in the next month or two. Standing committees. Health subcommittees, policy?
No meeting.
Have not met. Negotiations? Have not met. PAC?
We have had two meetings.
Oh, you guys are busy.
We had a meeting on June 8th, and we had a meeting on June 23rd. Our June 8th meeting, we've finally concluded negotiations with the professional staff, and very happy to report, after 18 months. We settled a one-year contract at 1% and a three-year contract, and in the three-year contract, it was a one-and-a-half, two-two, and we gained an additional half hour of students. So, their student day is one from 6 to 6 and a half hours. So, very happy with that.
Yeah.
That was huge for us. We did do the required two reads of the budget and approved a budget based on 117 tuition enrollments, which is a decrease over this year. And we're hoping we won't see a big number for next year, but because of the way that the collaborative works, it intuitively means we don't have a good idea of what the enrollments for next year are at this point, but DEES wants our budget. And this is relatively new for us, we've only been doing it a couple of years, because we never approved a budget until October. Three years passed, because it's actually based on enrollments and what programs we need and the extra staff we need.
So, this year, they want a budget like now?
Yeah. For the past two years, we've had to do this by June, which is a big change for us, we're doing it, and we're still working our way through it. It's very hard, I mean, you know...
I can imagine that would be, if you don't know what your enrollment is.
Right, and placements for, and especially out-of-district placements, is still something that, you know, our school systems are working on. So, it's very hard, so...
So, are they gonna continue to use space here?
Yes.
Okay. That's good for us.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, the program that we have here is something that was displaced before it came here, and that's one of the struggles that we have, and all collaboratives have, is that we build programs, but we need houses for them. And a lot of what the collaborative does is it's a separate program, but it still needs POM models, so being in a building like Halifax is a benefit for both the kids in our program and the kids here at Halifax. And one of the things that the director, executive director reminded us of at the last meeting is, in signing the membership agreement with the Civil and Public Laboratory, we do agree to give you space in the building, so... Yeah, I think she's still looking for high school space for an older population. Doesn't help out here at Halifax, because the kids are too old to be, but I know that she had talked to Joy, and we don't have space in our high school. We're still struggling with that, and she is still looking...
I know. I talked to her the other day.
Space is always...
I'm willing to give up our building.
And where would you go?
Beach is good.
For now.
Works.
And our next meeting is in September, and we alternate between the third Thursday, no, the third Wednesday and the fourth Tuesday, so I'm not quite sure when that meeting is. It is on my calendar. But for right now, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, that's good. So, that's PAC. Youth and Rec. Obviously, we don't have a liaison right now, and things are probably pretty quiet, considering it's summer. I do know, just because my daughter is gonna be involved in it, that they have Teen Extreme Camp from July 7th, no, 25th through the 29th, and it's on their website, if anybody wants to go take a look at it and contact Dick Steele, his information's on that website if you're interested, and there's like all the field trip dates and times and how much everything costs on there. So, other than that, I'm sure they're pretty quiet for the summer. PTO? Do you guys meet?
I actually attended the meeting, and a lot of sisters don't want to touch it.
Oh, good.
And they basically talked about closing out there every year, and some things that are gonna start for next year. We're talking about fundraisers, what we're gonna do, and we'll talk about it more. And it was a relatively quick one.
When is our next meeting? Do we know yet?
September, and no, they did not know, but they specifically asked, and they are going back, because they're moving, so they need to...
Coordinate?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sure somebody will let us know.
Yeah.
Capital budget?
We'll get into MSBA briefly, but other than that...
Building and safety? Nope.
I'm thinking this one has become redundant, and we could probably scratch it from the roster, unless somebody else wants to do it, because we did our reports in the beginning, and nothing more has happened since then. The administration meets with public safety regularly, I think, don't you?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, so we don't need this committee.
What's the plan for the fall of the semester?
They're beginning the install. Steve's working his way through that.
And that'll be all on Facebook before we start?
That's the plan.
Okay. So, how do we go about absolving this subcommittee?
We don't have to list it on the agenda, we don't have to technically make it go away.
Okay. I didn't know if it was something formal that we had to do, or if we...
Well, if we wanna make the subcommittee go away, we can dissolve it, because then we'll be great. Just with committee vote, and reorganization on us?
It's not, because, well, actually, since you mentioned it, this was my thought on reorganization, was to, between now and September, if anybody wants to volunteer themselves for whatever positions are empty, they can email Joy and myself, and I don't have an issue with that, as long as, you know, everybody's okay with that. And if it's not full by September meeting, then we'll do it then. So, I mentioned other committees do it like that?
Yeah, a lot of the committees, just that they let the school committee, the secretary, let Lisa know, and she can just put them on, because the only ones that have to be voted have already been done.
Okay.
Like you voted all the positions that have to be voted, so the other ones, if you just wanna let us know what you're interested in, then to your point, if there's anything else left...
Can we go quickly over a review of what each one, I mean, I know what PTO is, but I'm gonna do a quick summary of each of them?
Sure.
Be some of, I guess some of our self-explanations, or, but like, all right, so Youth and Rec, is that just calling Dick Steele what's going on, this is going on, and then you report it?
Pretty much, that's my understanding of it, like, he'll let you know if there's a dance coming up, or fundraiser, or...
Does that be more apt to be able to do something like that, that I can do in my time and not commit to, I can't do a Thursday night, you know what I mean?
Right.
Yeah, if there's anything, any issues going on, like for gym usage, that's really what it started out as, all these years ago, when...
Was coordinating the gym.
Not even coordinating it, just making sure that everything's going smoothly and everything. And I think over the years, we've gotten better at it, and it has really not been any issues.
So, it's more just recording of, yeah, the dances?
Pretty much.
The gym is constantly used, I mean, weekends, that time, vacation, so I think it's just communicating with Dick Steele. We met, and Brian, which are pretty frequent communication with Dick Steele, so, he was in today? Should have known.
I think Dick should have really worked on our building usage, or different parts of the school. We reused the APR on the gym, and I think Dick knows that, that you're now kind of working on physical aspects of the gym. So, Matt met with Dick today, and, you know, they're talking about different parts of the gym, storage, and cleaning up, and all the safety areas, so it's kind of like an extra phase here, too, so communication was a really good thing to do.
Um...
But like negotiations is different all the time, when...
Yeah. It depends on what we're doing, contracts.
Just so everybody is aware, the contracts for all of the groups in the building are up June 30th, 2017, so this coming year is a negotiation year.
It's a busy year.
I feel like we just finished those.
We did.
Well, that's what I'm saying, right now.
That's because we're so much fun.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that one's probably kind of a commitment, the negotiations.
Huge commitment.
Yeah, huge commitment.
Huge.
Not kind of, it is a commitment.
I'm not even lying, it's not even kind of, it is a huge commitment, it's a huge time commitment.
What is the bylaw?
There's never a meeting, unless there's a problem.
With the bylaws, and I think the whole time I've sat on this committee meeting, it was...
We did it once, so us off did it.
Isn't that, if you're not sure, you call a lawyer and say...
It's sort of how the three towns work together.
It's the bylaws for Union 31, they're actually bright green now, instead of bright pink, because that's what...
That's outrageous.
It's for colorizing. And before I had joined the committee in Union 31, there was a huge revamp of the bylaws for how Union 31 worked. They'd worked fine, the only issue we had was how they had Sheriff Admin Review with children, and that's the only change we've made since I sat on this panel.
So, that doesn't...
It really doesn't...
No. It's really more, if there's some issue among the three towns, that would be the place that you would sort of negotiate that out, but that is basically no meetings. To your point, if you wanted to absolve Building and Safety, I guess we could just vote to do that.
I'd rather not be on the agenda.
But I think we'd... Yeah, I would agree, but I'm just saying that could happen later. Youth and Rec is a phone conversation. Sick leave bank?
I don't think we've ever met since I've been on...
Can be meetings, it can sort of revolve around, you know...
Negotiations?
More if there's staff health issues.
Yeah.
You know, if a staff member...
And in some years, it's very active, and in other years, you don't need help.
Yeah, it's quiet. Yep. Bylaw, there's no meeting. Negotiations will be busy, and policy, probably a couple of meetings during the year, two to three.
Thank you.
Yep. So, yeah, if anybody's interested in any of those positions, just email Lisa.
Lisa'd be fine. Yeah, that'd be great. Actually, Lisa would make the most sense.
And then, you know, if two people want the same slot, or three, actually, if there's two spots, then, yeah, we'll go from there, but I don't anticipate there being a big fight for any of these slots.
Probably not.
Admin review? No meeting? Did not meet. Union 31 did not meet? No.
But we will need to schedule one, after we survive closing out.
Yeah?
For bids?
Yes.
We need to go over the common stuff, like traffic rules, stuff.
And we're not doing buses this year, that was last year.
No, that was last year.
Okay, no, that's good.
The fun stuff, personal supply.
Yep.
You got them all.
Yep.
It's because I've done it so many times.
All right, Mr. Broderick, you're up.
All right. Our... Just, I didn't even put out the review, the report here, but I just wanted to mention how graduation, it, I think it was pretty successful. I think it was almost under an hour per grade six, which I think is a huge feat. They put on, the grade sixteen puts on a really good assembly, just at the end of the year, it's just, they planned everything, they practiced, they coordinated with Brenda Lassar, and the parents that are involved just helping out, so everybody kind of comes together for that, and it was, it was a really nice job, so...
I'd like to know where Brian's baby picture was.
It was...
We expect to see it next year.
I know, I was trying to convince him to just at least put Teddy.
Put a pass by him.
Yeah, because I remember the first year that I had mine in there, it was about, like, a lot of plaques for that picture.
You look pretty much the same.
But I think I had maybe chocolate cake all over my face from that.
He does love it.
So, again, it was just, it was a great night, so thanks to everyone who kind of checked in on that. And the other piece that I wanted to add was that we did do student placement, we put it on the report cards this year, and, you know, it really went quite smoothly. I think the parents were happy to have the information at the end of the year, before the summer hit. There were a few kind of calls that we had, just very minor details, but nothing that we couldn't handle, so I think it was...
You're making other towns jealous, you know? I was out like a, I can't remember, one of my kid's sporting events, there's so many of them, and they started talking about it, and they're like, "How do you know who your kid has next year?" I'm like, "Well, this year, we did a little bit differently." Yeah, exactly.
This is the way it used to be.
And the other parents are like, "How did you get that to happen? I have to wait, and my kids run to the mailbox, and da-da-da-da-da," so it's really, I mean, the kids love it.
It's...
And the parents are grateful, too, and they're all talking, "Oh, who do you have? Who do you have?" Instead of trying to get ahold of each other in the summer, you know, it's like, they appreciate it.
They're trying to really to drag it out, and like, spend money to mail it out.
Yeah, right.
And then we have less time to make any...
We like that attitude.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, and it's really, because we're sitting here, and we're licking envelopes, and it's really much easier just to have tickets to put it out on the...
Yeah.
The one list that we did have is the incoming K that does not have there, because we really tried to get the information like on the last day of school, but what happens is we need to get all those incoming K on in power school, so that we can generate mailings and things like that, just, we have no other way to communicate with them besides mailing, so we did not get that in. So, it'll be some, Ellen, I think, is working with...
Dave Murphy.
Dave, thank you. Dave Murphy, he, because he puts all the information, so as soon as Ellen gets back next week, then we should be able to get them out, so hopefully by the end of next week, we should be able to send out the incoming K letters.
That's great, nice.
And so, enrollment, right now, we're at 577 students. That's 14 more than we had this last year. Kindergarten has kind of stayed steady, right now, we're at 92.
Is that more than last time you closed?
I think it was like 88, so there was a few, but we have, hopefully, it's still where it is. And we have maybe five or six possible registration, not for kindergarten, there's, I believe, two in first, two in third, we're just waiting for some final paperwork, so that number may bump up, 577 might go up to 582.
You mean like new people that move into town?
Yes. They said they're moving in, but we just wait to actually put them on the roster until we get all the paperwork that they need for registration, you know, from nurses' forms and paperwork from the, where they're transferring from, so, I would say there's been like five or six. It was, we're in kindergarten, but first, I don't know, grade... And that number went up, just because we have a big incoming K, and we have a tiny sixth grade class, so it's, I think, in the low 60s, so that's probably why, just to...
Some projects. Custodians, working very hard right now, rock fears, they're just about done waxing those rooms. Big change this year is, I think we're having 14 moves. We're moving the fourth grade team to the back of the building, we wanna get the older kids to the back, and we want the kids up front, so grade four will be moving with the second grade teachers on these two classrooms over here, so, plus, we're moving Mr. Troy on his technology room with the computer lab, so there'll be a switch there. The OT room is moving as well. 14 rooms, I think, altogether, so they're gonna be really busy cleaning, rubbing walls, waxing, and basically moving furniture, so, they're working hard. I actually take him around, I know this story, I don't know if you hired me to be the maintenance man, but I would have made this, a little bit of maintenance.
All right, there you go.
I'll help out anyway.
There we go.
But...
We like people who roll up their sleeves.
Yeah, that's right, but it's a big building.
It is a big building.
There's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Yep.
And just, just with the process of cleaning out a classroom is a lot, and taking the furniture out, cleaning the walls, stripping and waxing the floors, it's just, I mean, it takes the four guys to do it, so, any of those additional projects, I don't...
I'm curious as to why...
Don't get those hands dirty.
Placement, class placement, all this, I don't know.
Somebody has to supervise.
I'm just curious as to why they moved, is there a...
I think we just wanna have the older kids in the back of the building and the younger kids up front.
That seems to make sense.
Situation-wise, I think that's our goal, and I think we decided that, so I think it'd be nice, because we're getting two new second grade teachers, we decided to start, and getting, Miss Steele's working down to fourth grade after Mr. Troy retired, so it was a good time for the new teachers in the mood to kind of try that. But I think those two, the two second grade classrooms are really tough, because the bathrooms, it's a long walk, and so, I think you're a little bit older, it might be a little bit easier to avoid them, so, that was, I think, the primary reason why.
It's just the collaboration, too, of the team itself, because the team, because they are all self-contained in second grade, so I think it is difficult, and we have two down here and two at the other end, so moving them to the fourth grade wing, they'll all be...
Do you know why it wasn't like that in the first place? It seems like it makes them much more secure.
It was, I feel, actually, Mr. Ray, Mr. Ray and Miss Steele both had these rooms down in the kitchen.
Yeah, they did.
So, Mr. Ray was getting all nostalgic, because he wanted his older friends, and he was like, "This is the room that I started in," and so he was really excited just to be back there, so, and then, he was on a team with Miss Steele.
Yep.
That...
When my kids were there, when my oldest was here, that's how it was.
So, in the fourth grade team, just in general, they're strong collaborators by nature, just so, even though there's the distance between them, they still feel that, you could put them anywhere in the building, and they'd still be able to communicate. It's just a good, soft team.
I'm just...
I'm trying to think, some of the new teachers' classrooms. Other small meetings, Matt can probably describe this in better detail, day-to-day, when they are completed, but we are putting the air conditioning and heating unit in the music room. But we are putting the air conditioning and heating unit in the music room to deal with the heat problem of summer and the.
The lack of heat in the winter.
The lack of heat in the winter.
It was three, it was three rooms.
It's really.
And they made it into two larger rooms with whatever.
There's something going on above those ceiling tiles. I mean, if you put a thermometer up there, it will register thirty-five to forty degrees, so I think undertaking that would be a huge, huge, huge deal. The roof project will help with that. The single-pane windows don't help with the situation, but there's days in the winter where it's.
Kids have to wear coats. They literally have to wear coats in there. It's ridiculous.
And the sun coming in, and in June, you can get eighty, eighty-five degrees, so.
I can't see.
We're trying to do a new.
No, it's awful.
We're also re-gasketting, I think, continuing from last year, to do some rooms. We're installing newer vents in some of the classrooms. I think they were doing the upstairs, upstairs to their creative rooms. Rooms in interior painting, so expect some more color always.
Nice. I was going to ask about that. That's awesome.
So the, the red, it's called the red wing. We're fourth and fifth graded currently. We'll be the second and fifth grades, but that wing is on the dock to be painted, and then for the front, the front locker.
Nice. That's exciting.
Yeah, it's just red.
Uh-oh.
I hope we keep my tie on.
Still there from modeling ground.
She won't be here much longer, it's fine.
I think Matt is getting some color swatches, so anyone who's.
We're repairing, we're repairing vents around the dumpster area. We're extending that space, I think, about six feet to those trees. We want to try to get the paperwork beside them, then Matt there, so we need a little bit of bigger space. And, well.
And the fire chief.
We're going to.
Fire chief, yeah. Yeah, the fire chief was concerned about the safety.
And then we're installing some permanent log squares that we have in the front lobby, down in the gym area, working with you throughout, so. Should look good down there.
What about the outside of the building?
Well, I don't think we should touch until we get through MSBA.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea. You're right.
Yeah. I think they need to come and see it at its, all its glory.
Oh, well, yes, of course.
So we have the approval.
I had complaints at the fireworks.
Yeah, yeah. It, it is really rough, but I, I think with them coming, with the project manager coming, we really need them to see the, the state.
The need.
I, I think so.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Just kind of recapping the staff, saying goodbye and good luck to Pamela Gould. She and Aldi, so retired Pam Gould, was a first-grade teacher. Trisha Prowlant was in fourth grade, and Benny White Rose was special educator in.
She retired, too?
Yes. And Kate Lanon was a Title One teacher here for eight or nine years, and she got a classroom teacher position in, I believe, like.
That's fantastic, yeah.
And one, I apologize, there is one more that, that is leaving us. It's Junie Companer. She was a parent professional in third grade. She was the one who, she worked in the cafeteria for a number of years, and then when that position was, was cut off, then she moved into the classroom. So she's decided to explore other avenues.
So we scare her away.
I, she's.
Not cut out for everybody.
Yeah, I, I, well, it was, she had two jobs, and I think, you know, she was leaning towards, you know, pursuing her other position more full-time. And I believe that position was posted.
Yes.
And we're saying, I think we've said it a couple of times, but the new faces that we'll see here, Kelly Cana, grade two, Devon Morris, also grade two, and Julie Robashow, Robashow, Robashow. She will be this special educator that is replacing Betty White Rose. But just to point out, Julie is going to be in the middle grades and grade four and a little bit of three, just because of the way we, we work as our special ed teachers. So she won't be in the primary grade as Betty White Rose. That's all I have for the staff. And Title One Summer School is beginning next week. Runs from July twelfth to the twenty-eighth. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and runs from each day until the end of the year. So again, it's, it's a good program. The enrollment is, is, it's steady, but it's not a huge number, but it's a good amount of students that are there. Keeping, keeping it in small groups, but I've worked on it, I've worked on it in that. I mean, one of our Title One teachers, Rachel Howe, and I believe there's one from East that came over.
Are you doing the student discipline policy and procedure and phone use?
Oh, I don't know that.
If you're done talking about all your list of.
Sure. Unless you guys have any questions about, um, reports. So student discipline policy and procedure, just kind of, we've had some discussions about what is a parent to do when they come across an issue, and just to kind of clarify more, so like what's in our handbook. And just to get the message out there, what it is that people, how do they handle something? Or how do they go about it? Do they pick up the phone and call me, or do they call Joy? And in our handbook, it clearly states that, you know, that one, we're working together as a team. It's, you know, it's the student, it's the family, it's the teachers, and the administration all working together. And that's the biggest piece, is that we're all working on this. You know, we're here providing a positive, productive learning environment. And when it does come in issue, we want to make sure that we follow through the right channels. So in the handbook, it states, you know, start, start with a classroom teacher is number one. And if, and then move your way up the line, I think is, is really what we're hoping for that people do, because if they come to Ryan or I, where our first question is, did you talk to the classroom teacher? And if they didn't, then we want to encourage them to go back towards that classroom teacher or the specialist or whatever, staff member that may be. But then if they feel that they're not making any progress in terms of that discussion, then the next step would be to come see Brian. Or he's not available myself. Brian, what we do, we work pretty closely together, and if he's busy, then I'll pick it up. If, if I'm busy, I'm sure he will. So it's, he and I are almost, you know, we're constantly in communication together, so it's, it's almost, you know, it's a little bummer. So, but again, if then, we didn't solve the problem, if, if that wasn't working, then it'll be headed down towards central office. And whether it be Chrissy or Troy, yeah, whether it's more available items, I would say it would be start with Chrissy. Or this is a special education situation to talk with Ari Grable, the spec director. And then, if then we haven't come to a agreeable situation and, and a plan moving forward that's helpful for the student, the family, and staff here, then it would be bringing in system feedbacks where they would kind of figure out on action.
I hope it was, it would be known yet, that, as soon as that happened? Not really.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, in my case, I, I do feel that there are things that possibly come our way that probably can be handled at the classroom level. And I don't know if it's, if it's just been the, the past, it's been what's past practice, is that people feel like they're, they're more comfortable just jumping to administration as opposed to going to the teacher, or even going to, sure, Joy has probably gotten some calls that just went over my head, and I think what we like to do, even for myself, is, and I enjoy and Chrissy support that, too, is that give us a chance to fix it and resolve the situation. And the same thing happens with the classroom teachers. I think they would like to have an opportunity to be part of that discussion. If there was an issue, to kind of clarify any misunderstandings or what was going on, because I think when they feel.
If they're upset, though, sometimes they don't even want to go there. They just want to go to the door, so, I mean.
In my first.
They, they might ask it, but some people just might be like, hmm, you know.
And, and that has happened, and I'm comfortable with it, and I'm pretty open with the staff. We're both pretty open with the staff. It's just like, whoa, what happened here? We got a phone call, and then sit down and we kind of work it out together.
Yeah, sure, isn't that always easy?
No, it's, it's part of the job, but I think it's a long time. You have a pretty transparent.
I think when you do jump, it's like, it's, it's even more time and it's even more back to. So if you're getting call straight to the parent, like it being bold, it was a call, it's the first time you're hearing that, but I can't, you can't, have to investigate it. So then you have to go back to the teacher, go back to the garbage cleaners, and that's all investigation, where if it stops down, they have contact, then the teacher communicates with us.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that there are going to be, maybe not messages, there, there will be an instance where a parent just doesn't feel comfortable.
I know. And I think sometimes we get blindsided. I'm sure you might be blindsided.
And I think we're approachable enough that families do find that there's comfort in coming to us, and that's fine, but we also do want to keep the staff members involved. Because I think when they feel like, oh, my goodness, he went to my boss, and he didn't even talk to me, I think they feel like they did something wrong, or they feel like they, they.
They were not competent enough to handle it themselves, or, yeah.
And that's really not what we want. I mean, it's always, it's a learning tool for, for all of us. I mean, just we can offer, sure, Joy and I have another conversation, like, maybe we should have handled this one this way. It's the same conversation that I had with, with Brian, I had with, with staff. It's like, maybe next time, let's take a different route.
Yeah.
And that's, it's, it's a learning tool, just the way we work the students. And it's just, it's not that we're doling out these suspensions and, you know, these, you know, situations here. We're, we're here to educate, you know, in the classroom, on the playground, in the cap, so.
And make it a comfortable environment for every student, too, exactly. And honestly, you know, teachers have personalities, and they're all different. And some, some teachers have, you know, a very different way of handling it than another teacher would in the same situation. And, and I think that sometimes that plays a role as well in, in how things go down.
Absolutely. And.
And how a parent responds to, to it.
And what we're working on with staff here is, is implementing responsive classroom. So it's, it's an approach to just classroom management, behavior management. And so we have a number of staff that are going to a summer workshop for three days. At the end of July, they're going. And we bought a bunch of resources, literature resources for staff to use for some, summer reading. And we've also been working with our adjustment counselor to kind of bring, for next year, for staff meetings and some book groups. So it's something that we're, we're going to spearhead, and we're going to try to make sure all staff is going to be trained in the responsive classroom. We're going to use a common language throughout classrooms, throughout grade levels, and then hopefully to assist, fix out the parents as well. You know, we have clear expectations from kindergarten all the way through grade six. So I think that's sometimes where the breakdown happens, is when you go from kindergarten to first grade, you have a different set of rules. And then you go from first grade to second grade. It's another different set of rules where, and every classroom is like that. I mean, every classroom has their own guidelines and classroom rules, but still, in the building sense, we want to make sure that we have common language, because we're seeing students in the classrooms, in the hallways, out at the, on the playground, in the cafeteria, and we want to be able to use that common language, the same language we're hoping that our staff is using in those different settings. And even on the bus, too. I mean, the bus is forever.
I would like to say Ramona administrators, where like, I'm not the total disciplinarian, and we're not here to suspend kids, and.
I don't, well, we are a basic building.
The reason why we're here, the reason why we're elementary school educators, is because we know that we're molding kids to be citizens, and then they're going to get there, and they're going to make mistakes. There has to be logical arguments. They have to think about what they did wrong. It's not always about you going to recess after school. It has to be a discussion, and it has to be, what did you do that you shouldn't have done, or how could you do it differently next time? And that's how I think we approach it a lot of times. Five percent of the time, it's going to be a discipline, because there has to be.
Right.
Has to be a consequence. But for the most part, it's a learning environment. These kids trying to learn to be citizens, good, respectful, responsible people. And it's our job, that's why we're here, to try to guide them in one way, so. It's not all about, you know, keeping them good for recess or after school, or have negative, negative consequences. But kids really, they don't really get anything out of that. It's more reflecting on what you did and moving forward after you've grown up. We feel that, and we want that to be a school-wide approach.
So you mentioned something that makes me think of a question. How do you deal with the bus issues? Because the bus, I feel like, is a whole different entity in and of itself, and it's a hard, it's, it's a hard thing both as, as a parent and, I mean, there's so many, there's such a disconnect, you know what I mean? So it's, because it's like, well, this happened on the bus. Well, it's like, then who deals with it? The bus driver? Because the bus driver doesn't always deal with it. And then, do you guys deal with it? How does that, how does that work?
I have, I think I was logging in, I think about twenty-two bus slips here. That's surprising, to be level, I think. And you go, you look at the videos, you have the new video system, great.
Oh, that's true.
You can actually watch it. And there's only so much you can see. You investigate the kid, sometimes you talk to the bus drivers, sometimes you have to like go out to school. You don't get a bus slip, you might get a phone call home. Someone's, it's going on sometimes. You call the bus company, can you talk to the bus driver? It's, it's a tough situation. I say that's probably one of the toughest parts of my job.
Yeah.
So we got twenty-two bus slips, so then I have been three hundred.
Right. So who writes the bus slip?
The bus driver.
But you always.
That's what I mean. So how do you know? Like, so say the kid comes home and says, you know, such and such happened on the bus, but there was no bus slip involved? Like, how did, so a parent should call you or call the bus company? How does that?
They call us. They call us. They don't call, I, I mean.
And they should call you, right? That's like the procedure?
Yes.
I guess, yes.
Yeah. I mean, who deals? I just, I want to know, like, who deals?
No, I, I know, I, I'm just saying that I know in the town that I live in, we, we don't call school, we call the bus company. But here, since we've always, it's, well, I mean, I can go either way, just because the fact that you have the bus company, you have the bus driver, it's, it's almost like they're a classroom, there's set of rules.
Right, right.
And then we're getting the information, we're getting a phone call from a parent or even from a bus driver. A lot of, I, I would say, a lot of times, it's a phone call from a parent. Said, "This happened on the bus." So then the day goes by, because it's usually on the PM or on the ride home. We get it, and we're like, all right, well, we're going to have to look into this, and so we're going to have to call in X, Y, student X, Y, Z, and we're going to have to talk to the bus driver. So it's not like something that just happens in an instant and is all. It's, you know, interviews with two, three, four students, talking to the bus driver, and then contacting those parents. So it's not something that really is, it, it, it's a lot, it's a big part of the job. I, I don't know how to improve. I mean, maybe it's working, I think, a little bit more with the bus company, because I think the bus company is like, call school.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we, we had a situation with a parent who was on the road, and the bus, I think that another parent had come. And there was a situation between students on the bus and the parent that was on the street, and another parent had called the bus company, and they said, "Call the school." Like, well, what are we to do with a parent who's standing in the road? So I didn't know who it was, they didn't know who it was, and I was sitting there, and I was kind of like, I'm not really sure where to go with this. But I, I do feel like the relationship with the bus, I think it's got to be a little bit more taken, I think, to be honest with you. Because, again, I'm not, we're not on the bus.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I know it's, it's a difficult situation to be in for the bus driver. You're looking in the opposite direction, and you've got sixty kids behind you.
Yeah.
So I think I'm just having a clear, I mean, and not all buses, every bus driver is different, too. They all have a different set of rules. And some are, have more students than others. So I think the number one piece is making sure that the rules are clear for students at, at, at the beginning of the year. They're consistently followed through, and then if there is a situation.
So we don't have any say in the rules of the bus drivers?
It, we don't set the rules. It's just, I mean.
No, just because, well, to the, I, one time Ethan came home singing an inappropriate song. You know, it was three or four years ago when I called up Mrs. Mon, and I said, "My kid's singing blah, 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 blah." And I know, and I said, "Wait, you play that song? Oh, I love that." So she's like, "I'll handle it." You say, you know, because I said, "Oh, if you're familiar with the lyrics of the song?" She's like, "Oh, yes, I am." And I know, and I said, wait, you play that song, oh, I love that, so she's like, I'll handle it, please, they know, cause I said, oh, if you're familiar with the lyrics of the song, she's like, oh, yes, I am. So, and then, I mean, you know, so I, I mean, things like that, I would think that'd be common sense, but obviously this bus driver, you know, was just playing the tunes, and it was kindergarten through whatever, so.
In that case, we do have a list of radio stations that are appropriate, not appropriate, correct?
Aloud, oh, we do, yeah.
And that does get revisited, and if that, that should come, that, if you, if that does happen, just let us know, cause
It's so long ago, yeah.
Cause we do, we do have, there is a list, there's a list of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable.
It's a hard line, too, with the suggestions, so I understand that, but I just thought, like, that particular song is a bit much, and she, again, she handled it, but
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
And so, like, some bus drivers would say, no talking aloud, or like, everybody has their own.
And and they all have their own set of rules, and and that's kind of goes back to, you know, how they handle their bus and how the teachers handle their classrooms, it's I think it it would be nice to have a little bit more clear, consistent set of rules, and maybe a little bit more give and take with the bus, the bus company itself. And I, we talked to David a lot, um, but, um, I don't know, it's, I feel like it could be the rules and expectations for the for the bus drivers, and for what, like, whose roles.
Yeah, no, you think they would have, uh, to make it easier for them, too, to say the bus drivers, these are our rules, and so they tell the kids, like, why wouldn't they wanna have an organized?
I think the physical aspect of the bus is 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 a factor, if you're driving, you're trying to concentrate, and you've got.
Oh, God.
Yeah, how do you enforce that?
Six graders, sixth graders fifty feet behind you.
Cops on the bus.
A lot of times it's not gonna save, or he's not gonna see the bus driver, so that person might have been forced or pulled or cursed that, they get off the bus, they go home, they tell the parent, the bus driver's unaware of that a lot of the time.
Hmm.
I rode the bus, did you want, I can't, I can't any, I can't see any, because there's seats in the way, they're pushing each other, fighting each other, it's like, so there's only, I think the physical, you you're facing one way, you're trying to drive to him safely, like, the driver, and and there's probably some, I mean, I get a lot of kindergartners in first grades, believe it or not, because it's literally five, six feet, two seats behind them.
No, I know, but. But do they do the thing, like, where our bus, it was all the ki- like, the youngest kids to the front and the oldest kids to the back, did everybody do that?
Some, what, there's some assigned seats going on, I mean, if you do misbehave, you need to be brought into the front.
Right, I don't know.
That's a gentle.
Yeah, there's, that's, that's kindergarten kind of pieces. I don't know about that would cause if you went and sexed the kindergarten, but when kindergarten, six feet away, that would be worse.
Yeah, but they're like this.
Not necessarily. There's ones joking on the seat, yeah, of course they were.
My case was. Are they really, but.
I mean, but even just something as simple as posting the bus rules right in the front, that's all I can say, it's just, just what teachers do in the classroom.
Yeah.
You know, and then they revisit them, you know, throughout the year, um, I don't know, I, and other weeks, we we even just kind of brainstormed a little of just having, like, a bus of the month award, things like that, it just, you know.
The one that didn't have any.
That's not a terrible idea, actually.
Well, it's just the thing to 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 try.
Some some incentives to get the kids to behave.
I mean, I don't see.
Positive reinforcement.
I know, but this is fine line of bribery, and we should be doing it anyway.
That's true, yeah, yeah, it's a good point.
I guess that's hard, you know.
So it is, it's a market practice.
We talked about expectancy, we need a, in the hallway, in the class, and then on the bus, it's like, possibly, you know, like you said, shouldn't be rewarded, shouldn't be expected, but the way it should be, though. Like you said, ninety-five percent of kids are good. Um, I mean, it's good to get a bus slip, believe it or not, if you know what happened, and if that was a weird, it's pound of calls in.
And you can hear whispering, either, and the kids can be whispering things which are.
And it's difficult, because it's not our staff members, you know, the caf or outside the playground, they're our staff members, so we can really
Right.
Right.
do a pretty solid investigation with it, with bus drivers, talking, talking to a kindergartner the day after is.
Yeah, forget about it.
Not, it's really is, it does, you know, it can be an an interesting, uh, discussion, yeah, but.
I think the bus behavior with the new drop-off pickup procedure, I think we're at about forty percent, um, on drop-off pickup, I guess, I don't know.
I think so, I think the numbers is definitely about.
So, maybe it might be three, four, or five kids last on the bus, I don't know, I think twenty-two bus trips is actually not a lot to, you know, then again, a lot's going on, really the same, but individual moment, kind of gaining their own sort, then I'll tell them to pay there.
Right, by the time they that you get to it the next day, the fish is now this big.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I hear you.
What did you learn on working with us?
I think it's just revisiting, you know, having the bus drivers just kind of set their expectations on it and follow the curve with it, you know, making sure that, and a lot of times, they do assign seats if if necessary. As a classroom teacher would do.
Right, right.
But the quiet kids, they're not, they're not, they're not, as long as they're.
Yeah, so, and and I think it's a good, it it's a good approach to it, is assigning seats, and because as soon as, and you stop, they're jumping around, and some are allowed to do it, and some are, some are, but I think having these assigned seats is where they go, just having a clear set of rules.
Do you wanna talk about the phone use policy while you're talking, policy?
The phones really just, the office phones are there for student use.
So kids should not have their cell phones in school, correct, or they should be off when they have them?
They should be off and in their bag, so there's no need for student cell phones at all, um, and if there is an emergency or a situation, they need to call home, then the office phones are available, so.
Is there ever a time where a student couldn't use them on?
Um, ever, well, maybe in the middle of classroom instruction, or a test, or.
Yeah, that works too, you know, I I just, you know, if we're gonna say, you know, we want the students to have their cell phones off and in their bags, if a student wanted to get ahold of a parent, is there any time that it's not a worry? And and I, I mean, in the middle of classroom instruction, in the middle of testing?
It's tough, to be honest, it's 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 a judgment call from the staff member, to be honest, because we have kids that would be down here, I gotta call them up.
Yeah.
Like, oh, for what, uh, I wanna go over Jojo's house, or I have a baseball game this afternoon, and I wanna make sure that I get there early, and it really, that's, I mean, the office phones are like. And again, every teacher is different, some teachers are like, go, and others are like, no, I, no, so it it's it's hard to say, it, I feel like it's a judgment call, even when students come down to the office, if I see them, like, oh, what are you calling about? Or Alan, or Claire, or Brian, like, we're all sitting there, we ask, what are you calling about, just to kind of gauge, like, some are, you know, asking for, to be, a lot of times.
Want to go home?
They wanna go home.
Yeah.
And if we get, and.
We're parents over here, okay, we've been there.
And you'd be surprised at how many would say that, oh, well, I'm gonna go to the nurse, and then come around to the to the office and say, come pick me up, and then the parent on the other end, it's it's kind of hard, it's.
What's wrong with you?
Right, and and they don't remind me, like, that's what, that's what you do, but, you know, it it does happen, I mean, so I.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
The best answer is that it it's a judgment call from the staff, and, you know, um, just like when a student asks to go to the nurse, there are some students that, or the bathroom, that, and they're gonna ask you.
Right, every five minutes.
Every five minutes.
A linkerush.
And.
Yes, absolutely.
I, the nurse, you would believe how many visits she gets, and she, you know, they say they have fever, they say they have cough, and generally, it's just, you know, she takes the temperature, gives the cough number, sends the max class, but and I think it's a judgment call, and and there are some frequent flyers that, you know, maybe it kind of.
It's like a quite low.
Can it wait? Other times, something like that, but, you know, we try not to deny anything, but again, when you're in the moment, and, you know, you feel that there isn't, isn't the need to make that call, if it's an emergency, then we say, obviously, you know, make a call. But Brian and I are pretty much always available, so if there is a situation, you can say, can we talk to the kindergartner, you know, we could make that call, but.
Strange question, by every reason, does the caller ID come up as Halifax Elementary School when the kids call?
It just says Han- actually says Hanson on my phone.
Sometimes it says Penbrook.
They come up different.
Is there any way that, how do we fix, uh, cause I had.
You can't, you can't, it's the carrier. Because I actually have.
And we don't get, we don't get caller ID here, either.
Yeah, oh, really?
Oh, really?
So when you.
Are they on the phones?
Not on the new phones, it's a number, I don't know if there's a ray or if it's, it looks like, cause I'm always there, you're like, do I want to answer?
That's weird.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, of course, oh, my God, destroy. She's gonna yell at me again.
No, cause she, she was at school.
You're in deep trouble, kid.
She was at school at the Myrie, and she called from a foot phone from the nurse's office that is a Rhode Island number, so I didn't even pick it up, I thought it was a sales call. Hour later, she's like, Mom, I'm gonna be sick, you gotta come get me, I can't, if I get on the bus, I'm gonna lose it, and she called from the, from one of the other phones, and it said, like, Pembroke or something.
Yeah.
So I didn't call, but then I thought, I'll check the voicemail, and then I get that it's her, so I know, like, my kid is one of the only kids in the, in, um, middle school that doesn't have her own phone yet, she just got it this week, but anyway. So I know that it's not really a problem for them, but I figured here, like.
I know about cheese, you know, they're not supposed to.
Was that?
No, cheese, they have, they have cell phones, they're supposed to have after their, you know.
Right, oh.
That's the rule, that's the rule.
But anyway, it's just too bad that ours can't say, you know, I mean, I have, I have this number plugged into my cellphone, so I I IDed it, but it's just, that's just too bad, I wish we could do that, cause I wonder if.
I, well, we can talk to Steve Pala one day.
I've actually done that, too, and not known it was the nurse, and had to listen to the voicemail, and.
And you panic, it's all bad.
Yeah, and then I'm like, oh, wait a minute, and.
I mean, I think it's, I mean, I don't know, it's all.
Cause you know what, when the Y calls from the all-purpose room, or do they have a cellphone?
They have a cellphone.
Okay, cause that comes up, that's the Y, so, hmm.
I mean, I would just program, I guess the only advice.
And it doesn't have to go down to Halifax, no?
No, it says, mine says Hanson, I guess, it's some phones say Pembroke.
I just, every time I see a two-nine, four-nine, right, it's like, it's gotta be Chris School, or somebody, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, the way I have it now on my cellphone is I just programmed, I I think we have four numbers, maybe five numbers, and I just programmed it in into my phone, that it's Halifax Elementary School.
Yeah, sometimes it does come up, do I have the main number, sometimes it'll come up, is Halifax in elementary, but at home it doesn't, and public system has a main.
So that would depend on who's who's main of the call.
Right, yeah.
And it's, because the two-five-eight-one number is the main number, but, you know, we have, I think we have four, maybe five different lines, but at, and it's not, what I did was I just I just programmed them, programmed them into my phone, so that's what I, as soon as you get a number, you, you know, it stays the numbers, cause I'm not even sure her.
Yeah, we're, well.
It's probably different every time, because we're all using, we're just picking a line of telephone.
Different. Yeah.
Yeah, at home it just says, oh, you're saying, I'm answering, and some.
I guess if someone's not picking up, then it's enough, or you see an email, the parent, at least, people are always checking their emails, so.
Well, most of the time, they have the alternate numbers that they can call, like, most people list their cell phones as number numbers that they, they want, want another kid.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a true emergency, they would try each one.
Yeah, we try all the numbers on the emergency cards, and everything that we send is is mostly through email, we love it, it's just, they're more effective sending out emails for us, but if it were an emergency, well, it was, and a lot of times, we get more success calling the cellphone first.
Right.
I mean, people, and we'd encourage people to do that on the emergency card, because we'll call the home number first.
Yeah. Some people don't have a home number, everyone just gets.
Right, but I think that.
I do, but I never answer it, cause I always just, it's like somebody looking for money.
Right, but I, I mean, I've always just started with the home phone number, unless it it says it on the emergency card, but I find that, um, I'm usually more successful when I get the cellphone number.
Is there a place on the emergency card to say best number?
Preferred.
Preferred, it preferred, or whatever, yeah.
The way that the the emergency cards are now are, it has home phone at the top, and then it has the the first two guardians, and it has cellphone, work phone, for both of them.
A lot of them put their cell phones on.
I do, I put my cellphone, it is, no, I think there's an email spot.
We.
There, there is an email on it.
We actually, now, in the middle school, what we were thinking of doing is actually printing out this, this is our our hall, this, we're discussing, cause I believe the middle school does it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they print out at the end of the year, the profile that comes off Power School, cause that's where all the email.
Yeah, they have, they have on the brain, so they, they.
So you gotta, it's it's a printout with all the information, parent, student, and contact numbers, I believe.
Or maybe they change, you know, whatever, make any changes necessary, or whatever.
So I I think that's something that we thought that we would look into, is, because we can go right on Power, because not always, the the information on Power School is not the same information always on the emergency card, because if you changed information on your emergency card, that doesn't necessarily mean it's changed on Power School. So we would have to then go in and change it on Power School.
But it sounds like that way is better.
But the way that the middle school does it, they send out a printout of what's on Power School, I don't even know if they have the emergency card, if it's set up that way, but they send out the printouts, and then that updates all the information.
And you sign it if there are any changes, well, you sign it either way, if there are any changes.
Right, that's why they have to fill out your address six times, but.
Right.
So we we do that every single year with the emergency card, we have it, we we got a hold of the middle school, and they just printed off Power School, and they send it to the families, and they say if it's, if the information is correct, then just check it, and if it's changed, then then that way, it's in Power School, so all the information is is updated.
That's good.
That's, so that's our whole.
Okay, any more questions about it?
Um, just can the kids use their phone on the bus, it's up to the bus driver, or is that?
Not supposed to. They're not supposed to.
Not supposed to.
But then we said.
No.
It's supposed to be off and in the backpack.
Oh, that's tough.
They use them.
Oh, I'm sure, but but again, you're, you're in an environment with one adult looking in the opposite direction, it's.
I don't care. It takes my kids so long, they're all, and I appreciate the fact that now she has, she's like, we're getting married, and I'm like, oh, okay, instead of standing outside, protecting them.
And again, it's it's one person there with sixty students, it's it's hard to enforce some of those rules besides just reminding them, and if we do, and a lot of times, it's it's some of those harmless situations where they're just saying, alright, I'll be home in five minutes, but occasionally, you know, that five percent we do get.
I'm hungry, heat me up, somebody.
Well, I think here, too, the kids here, the cell phones generally, I mean, very challenging, sleeping or six years, and we're not talking about, can you remember, surprise.
Oh, God.
Fourth graders will start, fourth graders.
Yeah, you're right, most of my daughter friends have them, and I'm like, I'm sorry, it's not happening yet.
I know that. Sixth graders, too, I think, but I've I've seen.
I know, that's fourteen.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Okay, Christine, highlight of the day.
Sorry.
I don't like, I don't like that.
Sorry, that's interesting.
Hopefully that had less controversy, um, we have made it to the end of the year with our budget, I just wanna keep a little overview, and then I can, we can redo the actual form. Um, in total, we were returning thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars to the town at the end, there have been some surpluses and deficits in the budget, some of the surpluses were professional development, library services, media tech line, homeless transportation, didn't have as much as we planned on, um, and special education contracted services, which in the past year was a problem for us, this year it flipped. Deficits, the most significant deficit is a special education out of district tuition account, that was very significant, um, I had talked about using circuit breaker money and things like that, and we have used everything possible to make this work, um, the offsets that we're using to to make this, to make the out of district special education account tuition work, are out of district special education transportation, out of district vocational, and we will also be making use of some of the funds in contracted services, special education, and after all that, we still have, there is a surplus of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, one of the things we did have to use is the out of district vocational, so that will leave that account with a zero balance, there'll be nothing that can return from that, and then just as a side note, the school lunch program had a slightly better year this year than last year. They have projected that they will have a a small balance just past zero, so they'll leave, they won't.
In the black.
In the black.
They're in the black, yes, so we're not gonna have a deficit this year. Alright, now, on the financials in tonight's package, um, we do have the traditional financials here every month, this cover sheet, it was just like a snapshot time of where we ended the year, it's four o'clock this afternoon, this is, I don't know, everything came to a halt, um, so as you can see, we noted where our original budget was, when we look at the budget, we look at it as a whole, the town, although the town votes separate numbers, we look at it as a whole, and that's. And that's kind of how we, we do have separate appropriation of this, but this is how we do our balancing. We transfer the money in from the out of district vocational account. Once we did all of that, we were ending with a balance of a hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Of those funds, a hundred and four thousand three hundred seven dollars and seven cents are accounted for as encumbrances for items that existed at the end of the year that we do not yet have invoicing for or have not been completed. The one item I wanna bring to your attention is at the very bottom of the page, the fifty-five thousand dollar item. We are having, um, an issue with DESE. There's a student that, there's an LEA, which is their, um, assignment to their hometown as to who will be paying their tuition bills. And the student has not resided in our town, but there's a dispute with other town who claims that they belong to us. So we've been involved in that all year long. We do not yet have the, the answer from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we have encumbered for those funds just in case.
If the student doesn't...
I don't get it.
Reside in their town...
Um, I believe there was a point in time where the student was homeless, living in some temporary housing in Halifax. But that, that has been resolved.
Okay.
And it was for a very short period of time, they were never enrolled here. But we are, um, being cautious.
Okay. So if it comes out that, and this is resolved, that the other town is responsible for this, then the...
The town gets to...
This is returned to the town.
To the town of Halifax.
And that's where I wanna...
Yeah, yeah.
And we would let them know once we knew that if this no longer had to be on reserve. So that they would be able to make some decisions for themselves within the year for that.
Do we have a time limit to resolve this?
No, she's thinking the, the state?
Do we have a time limit?
Have you met the state? I'm sorry.
You stupid.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that aloud.
No, that was actually a good point, because this could go...
Traditionally, these are resolved pretty quickly because they understand the impact to the towns and especially at the end.
And, but this has been going on all year.
And if we didn't take care of this, we would have, we wouldn't have had an opportunity in the carrying and you get a paper. After a town eating, this is a Friday bill.
But it's not, money's worth fighting it.
So we felt this, even though we're being cautious, this is the, the best thing that we can do at the time.
And the town is aware of what's going on?
I don't know if they know with the LEA assigned, but they, we'll be getting a copy of this. We'll be speaking to them, so they know everything. And we're actually, the transfer, transfers that I spoke of, we will be submitting those to the town. They're having that meeting with the finance committee on Monday.
Oh.
So we'll be submitting all of that to them.
I'm sorry, Christine, what does LEA stand for?
Local education assignment, I think.
Okay.
It's your assignment of which school, which school district you belong to.
Okay.
The acronym's close to that.
It's good enough, I just wanted to have an idea, but...
Are there any questions? I'll try and let you know though, if that, when that decision comes in for the LEA assignment. So just so you know, cause that's such a striking item on there.
Right.
And I was trying to figure out why it was there and not in.
Yeah, it's, it's one we had hoped would, we would know the answer to. But as I said, we're, we're trying to save the town the money, so we're sort of going up...
We appreciate that.
Yeah. Sort of silly. Um, but I, I personally wanted to thank, I don't mean to interrupt at all, but Christine has worked so hard to make this work. It's been sort of a tough year with some ups and downs and, um, some issues within special education, which is a very large percentage of our budget. Both Marie Grable, our new special ed director, and, and Christine have done a yeoman's job to, to get us here. So I, I personally wanna thank them.
And our staff as well, everybody's done everything they can to, to make it work. And it literally was four o'clock this afternoon that we were stopped.
Right, and, and Kane and Brian and Matt have done some, you know, maintained the building and gotten some projects done very economically to sort of do the upkeep, which is what we need to do to maintain our investment. So, we're very pleased. So, thank you to everyone.
That's all you have, Christine?
That's it, yeah.
That's a big one.
Do you need me to come sign the end of the year report?
The end of the year report is due September thirtieth.
Okay.
And then I get the...
So I'm jumping the gun a little bit?
Well, thank you for being so early.
Do you remember? You remember? I do remember, I was a proud myself. Very good.
If I finish early, I'll make sure I let you know.
Okay.
She just finished this four o'clock.
Yeah. She's still, she's still got three to go. She's still got three to go.
Oh, my goodness, that's great.
I gotta buy lots of flowers.
Shall I?
Um, I put down FY seventeen budget, although there really isn't anything to discuss, um, on the budget. I just wanted, you know, to let you know that we are currently beginning our new accounting system. We are actually moving out of the carbon copy POs.
Yay!
Which is ridicu- we literally are still doing carbon copy POs. And Silver Lake did the investment of our new accounting system, which is feeding into all of the elementaries. So we've spent the summer, we did some new training. Ellen is online, the principals will ever actually be able to see what's left in the accounts. It'll be real time, we won't have carbon papers. It's going to rock our world. And we're really excited about it, but it is a tremendous undertaking to try to close out. It's about forty-five million dollars between all the budgets. So, um, again, please be incredibly kind and sympathetic to my dear friend Christine, who is working ridiculously right now. And Melanie Capasso, our accountant also, to get all of this done and to transition into our new accounting system. So, um...
So are monthly financials going to look different?
They will look different, we're not sure exactly, that's gonna work, bud.
I know.
You like the format, do you like the format of these ones?
It's not that I like the format, it's just that I...
We know what it is.
She doesn't like change.
Well, we can make sure that it stays yellow, so it stays...
Well, if you change to a different color, I'm not gonna know the outcome.
The economic structure of the appropriation of this is very similar. Any changes that we've done have just to refine it, make it more in line with the state's child accounts. And then in some areas, we've got to a little more deeper detail because we have to do that in reporting anyways. So we're, why not get it very beginning, so it's already, the data's already organized that way.
Can I make a request?
Sure.
Can you join us in September when you're gonna throw in your financial LS and Andy can help us through?
I think that can happen.
Okay, you can make sure the font's not any smaller than this.
Linda.
I think it is a little larger.
It's, oh, larger.
Larger's good, larger's good.
Cause it's not gonna be, is that a zero or do you...
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So the budget, um, again, we're just beginning. And, um, the other thing I did wanna mention, and, and I think we had spoken about last month, was we did purchase the new, the scissor lift, the used scissor lift.
Same, but three times fast.
Yeah, I know. So we're really excited about that. And again, it will allow us to deal with some of the areas that we just have not been able to access, so...
Is it here?
Um, I believe it is.
You can't play with it.
It's like a Bob's face, but I want to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're, we're really excited about that. So it wasn't a lot of money, but I think it can make a huge difference in the upkeep of the building. So, um, we were really pleased with that. Yeah.
So I, I apologize that this was, the water discussion was on here.
No, that's quite right, that's okay.
And I must've just skimmed right over it and brought it up earlier, so unless you have something else to say.
No, I have absolutely nothing to say, thank you, you took care of that for me. Um, and then the only other thing that I had is, as you know, and we've been speaking about Halifax, is beginning the process of the MSBA grant. We successfully submitted the grant, all the i's were dotted, the t's were crossed. We got all the paperwork in on time and correctly. And we've been invited into the beginning of the process. So the first thing that we have to do is, the town is going to hold a town meeting July twenty-fifth. And we have to vote for approval to begin the process. Charlie Sealeague has been working to come up with some information about the amount of money that will be requested to begin the process. And I think Casey, um, was going to try to make a motion that we would offer our support, um, for town meeting. The town meeting has to do the vote, but as a school committee, I think we should support the town's efforts to secure the funding to begin the process. I do not believe we legally and or technically need to do this, but I believe it is the correct thing to do and it's sort of the moral thing to do, is to show our support, um, for the upkeep of the schools. So, um, if Casey's comfortable with making, uh, that motion, that would be great.
I move that the Halifax Elementary School Committee vote to support the town's request for the Ola project manager for this phase at fifteen thousand dollars. And that is a price set by MSBA. Architect engineer for the roof project, forty thousand dollars. Architect engineer for the windows project, forty thousand dollars. Architect engineer for other work, forty thousand dollars. And other for five thousand. That's my motion.
My say.
Okay. Just a little bit of background, um, we did have a meeting. Kane was there, Joy was there, Charlie was there, the selectmen were there. Where we had a phone conference call with the MSBA, trying to get some numbers to say, okay, well, how much do we really need? MSBA, um, really didn't have any guidance for us, other than to go back and look at similar projects. The problem is, is, um, we're kinda unique. We have flat roof, we have asphalt roof, um, the number of windows we have, the kind of windows we have and stuff. So Charlie has spent a, a really an ornament amount of time trying to come up with the number of this. So I mean, I appreciate that hugely, because I would never have been able to sit there and say, okay, I have... How much do we need for engineering for the roof? I have no idea. So I appreciate where he is, this is the number that he's come up with, that he feels comfortable with. So I would appreciate it if we could vote to support that. Going into town meeting, knowing that, you know, the selectmen, the school committee, the finance committee are kinda all on the same page. I think it's going to be a benefit. And this project really needs to be done and this is only for the first phase of it. And, and we really need the engineers to come in and say, okay, this is really what you need to do. And get that piece of it, and we can go and even start talking about how much the whole project is gonna cost.
And there's a deadline for this?
Yes.
There is a deadline for this.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And it's a week later than the town meeting says?
It's a few days.
It's a few days after town meeting, so...
We don't have a floor. That's my concern is, is...
I think, plan on have, bringing your cellphone with you and we'll let you use it, even though it's in the school, to call all your friends to come vote.
Say that again?
I know, you realize you didn't hear a thing I said. I said, bring your cellphone with you and we'll let you use it, even though it's in the school, to call all your friends and get a quorum, yeah. Yeah, we, we have to get...
Raise all registered voters in your house?
Yep, exactly.
Yeah.
So it, it is gonna be tough to get a hundred people on July twenty-fifth, especially if it, it's ninety degrees. So, but there's not much we can do about it.
Well, you know, it is the school though, and so I feel like when you're talking about the school or the senior center, you will draw a crowd of some sort, you know? So I feel like if parents, you know, maybe we need to do a little PR move to try to get, um...
We, we, we can't, but if, on, on a social level, if you choose to do that, but we can't do that.
We can't as a school committee, they can't as an administration.
No, we definitely can't.
Right, right.
As, as long as we're only talking from our personal...
Right.
Right.
As a parent, I would like to see support for this building, cause my child goes to school here, then that's acceptable, yeah.
Yeah, so just be conscious of that.
Yeah, or have somebody else do it for you.
Even better.
Yeah. Hobbies.
To be on the devil's advocate side, cause I've seen enough HGTV episodes. What if they get the roof, like, started and then there's something they find? Like, how do we, how do you, how do you...
Well, that's why we're having, that's why they require the NPL.
Yep.
Because they're gonna come out and look at the windows, then after that, so...
Yes.
Then they're gonna have, they're gonna go back and design the project and say this. And then we'll have at least a better idea of what it's gonna cost. Cause right now, if, if somebody came down and just looked at it without doing any work toward or anything else, they could give us a price. But then they don't know what's...
Underneath, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, that was my concern too, is what if they find rotting structure and it won't hold the roof? Well, we have leaks, I'm concerned, cause for that reason, or mold.
And, and that's why they have to...
That's why they're so expensive, cause they better do it right.
And that's what my concern is as the project goes along.
Yeah.
We want it done right.
It's a big deal.
It's a, it's a big project and when it's, this is our only school, like, and...
Right, right.
There's not another place in town that's willing to pull our children if something happens, so we have to...
They won't fit in the Great Hall.
No.
I'm just kidding.
We use the Great Hall with women, mom.
No.
In the five, she's addressing all of it.
Okay.
And how do I do it?
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Casey's motion as stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
All right. Um, hold on, I lost my agenda.
Is it time for that other motion?
Hold on.
Madam Chair? In light of, um, it being summer, we normally do not have an August meeting. So unless there is an emergency, I would like to make a motion that we not have an August meeting.
Second?
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. All those in favor of, of Casey's motion to absolve the August meeting? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that gives me one less date to remember to list. So also, August twenty-sixth, we have new teacher orientation. August twenty-ninth through thirtieth is an in-service date for teachers. August thirty-first is every parent's favorite day of the year, first day of school. September fifth is Labor Day, so there will be no school that day. And September sixth is our next school committee meeting.
Wonderful.
So...
Most teachers are, are we, do they have any faculty session?
Nope.
Oh, we just always list them. It's always on there, just in case.
Right, that's it.
If Bob seconded, all those in favor of a German?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.